Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 14th, Wednesday 2018, regular meeting Moose Lake City Council. And I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank our guests that are here tonight. First item for approved agenda, are there any changes or corrections to the agenda?
Just add the old school, talk about the old school.
Under, put it under new, which would be six L.
The old school?
The old school.
Department reports, can we add an F? It's the liquor committee met and just like to give, have a brief update.
Okay. Any other changes, additions, corrections? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Number two, consent agenda. We have two A, the minutes for February 15th, 2018, city council regular meeting minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So move.
Have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under consent agenda, two B, one, the city accounts payable for March 2018, two B, which, two B two, which is the city financial reports, February 2018, and under B three, liquor store profit-loss statements for February 2018. Any discussion or questions?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye, excuse me.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under number three, which is public comment, this time is reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your minutes, your comments to three minutes, please.
All right. My name's Gary Harley. I moved to Moose Lake about seven years ago. I live up on 73, just past, just past Kenwood Road. And I was wondering if we could get a no-jake-break sign up there. From what I understand, there used to be one years ago. I have talked to Tim about this in the past, and I think he had even mentioned that. But it's no longer there. I've heard that it was knocked down and just got hauled away. And if the sign is, if the sign's up there and it's not enforced, these truckers don't pay any attention. So if one was up there and they would start radioing their buddies to stop using the jake brakes at 4:30 in the morning, because personally, I wouldn't mind finding out where they live and drive past their house a few times. But there again, Sunday night at 12:30 a.m., there they go with their jake brakes. And I was wondering what can be done about it? How can I get this started?
We can, we can call, contact the state and have them put one up.
All right. Will we put up or what's the process?
The state would have to be the ones to put up because it's a state highway.
Okay.
We can't put signs up, but we certainly can talk to them about the problem. And I think it's a good idea. I live on a block off of 73, and I hear him too. So I'm all for it.
Okay. Was it you I spoke to the other day in the library?
So the, we know who the DOT supervisor is in town, and I think we can contact him tomorrow and get working on that.
Okay. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
There used to be one up on, by going out of town, two up by the Dollar General, coming into town, those houses along there. And that disappeared too, that sign.
They may, they may have come down with the construction that happened because...
Well, I think it disappeared a few years ago, but I do know at that, at some point there was one there too.
After the roundabout, you're talking?
Yeah, between the roundabout and the Dollar Store. Because there's that little hosing there. There, they had complained about jake breaking. There was a sign put up, but it's been gone for, I don't know.
Back what both places in?
Yep.
One more question. If a jake break sign goes up, who's supposed to enforce that? Would that be the state patrol?
It would be local police. Our chief is right here.
That's on the city limits.
It, yeah, I guess it depends on, once they enter the city and are you, are engine braking coming down the hill, then, then technically we could.
Okay. Because it, the people that have the survey stored out of the business, I spoke to them before, and they says, "We don't understand it. Sometimes we're here at 6:30 in the morning and they're coming down the hill with their jake brakes." And that's right in town there. Thank you.
That's against the noise ordinance.
The sign wouldn't read anything about jake breaking. The sign would read, "Local noise ordinance are enforced. Those signs are no longer used anymore about jake breaking." The city or the town, or, excuse me, or the county, or the state, whoever's going to enforce it, would have to have a decibel meter, which none of them carry anymore. It used to be something in the past. So I think that placing the sign is good, and I understand that. But I think it needs to go another layer, and I don't have an answer for you on, on the enforcement, because no one has a decibel meter.
Okay. You said jake break signs are not allowed?
They're not jake break anymore. It's local noise ordinance are enforced. That's what the sign would probably say. It's no longer called, it's no longer used in that term.
I have seen signs up since...
And those could be very old signs, but most of now are, "Local noise ordinances are enforced." And then the next step would be who has a decibel meter and how much are they, and how are you going to enforce it?
Doug, why don't you explain to them where you work and...
I am, I work for the Carlton County Sheriff's Office. I work the, on patrol. So those are the things that I've seen in the past, and we've had other people with those complaints in the past, and it is an issue. But enforcing it is a challenge, just...
Oh, I can, yeah, I imagine so.
So...
If they were to sit in that church parking lot, of course, you never know when a truck's going to come through. But if they were to sit in that church parking lot, they could tell that that guy's using his jake brakes.
Yes. And then it, then it comes upon, how are you enforcing that? And are you enforcing it with every single person that comes through town? If someone's going to go in court, I'm only playing the devil's advocate, they're going to say, "What was the decibel? And what's acceptable? And how are your ordinances written to enforce that ordinance?" So there's more than just putting up a sign, as you asked and commented on. I just want you to be aware of that.
And of course, common sense would figure into the factor. But they're not going to say, "All my jake brakes are too loud." They're going to argue the point.
Well, we're certainly going to research it and find out. Appreciate your input, Doug, because you're probably up to date right now where we're not. We just don't know about it. But that'll be, Tim, job to look into it, bringing back to us. And could you give your phone number over here on your way out, so that we can call you and tell you what we find out, keep you up to date too?
Now, you said something about a noise ordinance. How is that enforced?
Again, that's one of the things. You can put up a sign that says, "We enforce them," but then it comes right down to, what does the ordinance state? Do you have a way of measuring the sound that is being emitting from the truck and other vehicles that are coming through? Are you doing it on a regular basis? Are you, I'm just going through what's going to come up in court if you go there. How are you going to enforce your local noise ordinance? So those are things that need to be looked at. Okay? Thank you.
Yes. I had a question. Do we have a meter? We don't.
No.
Are they pretty spendy, I imagine? Because we have complaints with ATVs also. You know, it's the same, same thing. It's just those one or two ATVs that are too loud, and that's the complaints we get. So it'd be, maybe something to look into, so we could enforce our...
I can certainly research on prices.
See, it'd probably have to be calibrated every year and stuff, but yeah.
And you have thousands and thousands of truckers that are going through this area. Not all of them are from the area. You can do situational stops on vehicles all you want. The chances that you're going to get a few of the people that are in the area conforming to those rules would help a little bit, but we, this is a major thoroughfare. So I think the, the police department's task would be a tough one.
Okay. I was, this past summer, I was out riding my bike, and there was a state trooper giving tickets, watching for people without seat belts up there by the church.
Yep, and we, they could definitely do that.
And I spoke to him about it, and he says, "They would watch for them, and if they could catch a couple of them, they would radio their buddies and say..."
You bet they would.
"...you better not be jake breaking down through 73." You know? And maybe that's all it would take, I don't know.
And it definitely would help, and I'm not saying that it wouldn't. I'm just saying that's probably one of the best things you could probably do is, is go out there and stop a few people and be visible.
You're more than welcome to sit in my driveway and listen to them come down through there.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for all the input from everyone. You're welcome to stay, or you can depart whenever you feel like it. Thank you. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports. Four A is the police chief. Department report for February 12th through March 10th. Mayor, council, thank you. Anyway, Travis is fitting in just fine. He's doing a very good job, very active. Been a somewhat busy month, able to get some, guys some time off. That's, that's been good. Couple of things, the ice fishing contest went great. It was very well attended and attended, and no issues whatsoever. It was a beautiful day. I was working that day, and there wasn't a call and no issues whatsoever. So that was good. Mugs and hugs, which we usually do in February, they're going to do it in June this year, which is not the most opportune time for us, because it's very busy in the summer, but that's when they're going to do it. So we'll certainly work with them to help any way we can. So that's going to be the, I believe, the second Saturday of June, so.
Spring fever.
Yeah. And about 10 other events. Already making plans for some of the events coming up in, in May. We have the Moose Run. And then it, there's pretty much something every weekend. So looking forward to spring coming, and obviously our, with, with spring, our calls go up considerably and the population goes up considerably. But looking forward to, to spring. So next month, we're going to be doing some of our mandatory training. We have mandatory training every year that were mandated by the post board and the state legislator, legislative branch administered more training that we're needing to do every three years. In addition to other training, we're mandated to do training on dealing with mentally ill people, more diversity training, and dealing with people in crisis. So that's, every three years during our licensee period, it's an additional 12 hours of training. So they just came out with the objectives for that training, so we're working with our training company that we use to figure out the best way to do that, so. Other than that, our ZERKER is still going ahead here. First part of next month, our squads are scheduled to get the new equipment installed, and training is coming up next week and the next two weeks for our officers to learn how to use it. So that's about it. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Looks like 132 calls for the month. That's quite a lot. Plus four Pine County Sheriff's Department assists, seven Carlton County Sheriff's Department assists, seven Mercy ambulance assists, six Minnesota State Patrol assists. So a lot of activity, and thank you. And pass it on to the staff, please. Next, Public Works Superintendent report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we all know we've had a ton of snow. Everybody's sick of it, including us. We're all ready for spring. So yeah, we had a whole lot of snow. We plowed a lot of snow. We broke a lot of stuff. We're in the process of fixing things. So with that being said, from last month, we, the trailer was ordered, that was approved. Campground lift station pumps and the Norwood lift station pumps, both have been ordered. The campground lift station, I'm going to try to get that done before the co-opening of the campground for the spring. So there's no delay. If we can't get them in before, then that's fine. We'll do it in the evening or when there's a low flow time. So we'll, we'll be out of the way and won't be as noticeable and be better for everything. The plasma cutter was ordered as well. Water department pumped 4.3 million gallons of drinking water this month, which is, which is almost double due to our water breaks that we have had, that we had last month, and are not fixed yet due to the frost steps. So we're just kind of holding at bay, and we're going to get them done here as soon as the frost is out. But everything is kind of tidied up for right now, and we're just hanging in there. So if it gets worse, obviously, we'll move ahead. But this nice weather definitely is making it easier for everybody and getting those things closer to getting done. Sewer department collected 10 million gallons of wastewater, so that's up too. So definitely, we have a spring melt going on, and a little bit of INI, we can see already starting to come. Couple of things, the snow, we talked about that. Pavel filling, you might have saw us out last week, we were out filling halls. Anyone, everyone always has complaints as to where the worst street is. If you want to share that with me, be my guest. Get ahold of me. I'll be, put you on top of the list, or whatever we got to do to get you done. I know everybody's street is horrible, and we'll, we'll get you done, so. Other than that, like I said, we had a lot of breakdowns, but we've had, had a lot of hours in the trucks here the last three weeks, so. Any questions for me?
Do you want to just really, really briefly touch on the wells?
So well number one, we're having some issues with. We're having high run, high run times with low yields. So what that means is it's not pumping the amount of water it's supposed to. So it could be down, I mean, we could have a stage, which is technically like a gear in a transmission, same thing. We could have a stage going out of it. We could have a screen getting full of sediment or dirt or sand or whatever. We're, I'm probably going to call Tinewell tomorrow and pick their brain a little bit and see which, which way we should go. I did dig up some reports from the past that did, you know, there's been documentation saying, you know, we should, we really need to do something with both of those wells. And well number one, you know, there's, there's been red flags on that for a while now. So it's definitely time to move and do something. You know, we, we've talked about a well project before. I know Tim and I have, and the Public Works Committee has, and we just hate to spend a whole bunch of money just before we do a huge project. But we, we need to have, we definitely need to look into that.
I think the reason, the reason I'd like to bring that up is, over the next month, if, if we do need to have somebody come out, there could be an expensive bill with that. So just before you see something like that on there, there is something funky happening with one of our wells, so.
I can definitely keep our Public Works board up to date on that too, as to what's going on and...
We've got to have water.
Yep, absolutely, so.
We'll take care of it.
Any other questions?
I do. You briefly touched on INI. With the spring coming this year, and we've worked, you guys have worked really hard at fixing some of the INI issues, are, is there a way that we're going to be testing this to see exactly where we're at this time of year?
We can test with a couple of different ways. Each one of our lift stations obviously have pumps in them, and we can tell by run hours, for starters, we'll be able to, to look at the seven different areas, the collection areas of town, and figure out where our worst ones are. And we've, previously, we have, we've done some work with Bolton and Mink to kind of dictate where our really bad areas are. And we have a handful of, of pretty bad ones. And we were able to use a series of a dozen flow meters, temporary flow meters, that went into manholes themselves, and we were able to measure flow from certain areas of town. We have that really narrowed down now. The biggest way to tell is going to be all from our, our lift station pumps and our flow meters. We do, we do have a new flow meter in at the main lift station. That's only a year and a half old, and that alone, just having the updated technology there, has, has dropped our, our collection, which really wasn't our collection, but it, it was, because we still have to report that to the state. But even that alone has dropped it considerably. I think, Doug, you and I, we've talked about a few piping projects we've done in the past, part of that wastewater project. That helped dramatically. The sump pump inspection program we did, that helped a lot. And since we're on that topic, anyone planning on doing any work in their basement, or any work to their house at all, it is, there is an ordinance for sump pumps. They do belong to be daylighted. They do, they cannot go to the sanitary. I'm sure a brilliant inspector would catch that, but just good information for people to know.
But along with that, I mean, the entire purpose of that was to get people's sump pumps out of this sanitary sewer. But with our water break, basically, we are breaking our own ordinance and piping that into the sanitary sewer system to make it cheaper for when we actually fix the water break, when the frost is out of the ground. So when you talk about where are we with INI, I think it's great that we could do those things. I think that as it stands right now, it's, it's all going to be incorrect, because we are piping a water break into our sewer system right now, which is bad, but in the long run, will save us money for fixing the water break. So it's all kind of a give and take. I mean, last year, I think you guys fixed water breaks for roughly 100 and some thousand gallons, and then...
Correct.
Next week, you turn around, you got a water break, and we're pumping, what, 200,000 gallons a day again?
175, yeah, something like that.
So I mean, we went from 225 down to 130-ish, back up to 175. I mean, it just kind of, you fix one thing, another thing breaks, so.
It's usually how it works. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Moving on to four C, technology library port. Tim, are you going to handle that?
The, I mean, the report is in your packet on page 35. Server backups are working, the new firewall. CW's been coming in doing a couple of projects. The new firewall will be scheduled for March 19th. We did receive some of the new workstations, and they're being installed. The new IP address from the switch to Genesis, though all the new IP addresses are, are changed over. It went really well for the city. You know, we kind of planned on it taking up an afternoon, and I think it took like 45 minutes or something like that. So it actually went really well for the city. The voice-over IP phones are installed at the liquor store. We're working on security cameras in a, in a couple of locations for the muni specifically. There's website and social media data there. That's about it. I think the library report will, will be looking for, for that in probably the next month or two here, to see the, the annual results from the library, so.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to four D, city engineer.
Nothing for right now.
Very good. Then four E, chamber of commerce updates.
Well, we've got the Easter egg hunt coming up on March 31st. It's a Saturday at 10 o'clock. It'll be at the new school and cafeteria. The Kiwanis is taking over the Easter egg hunt, but the Chamber is helping them this year and did last year too, so. And of course, the business expo on April 21st, that's a Saturday, goes from 9 o'clock to 1 P.M. And tables are still available for those businesses that want to rent a table and show the kind of things that they offer. And last Thursday, we had our chamber meeting. We had it canceled. We were going to have a meeting of community leaders to see how we can help them promote their events. And that was Monday, we had all that snow, so that was canceled, and it's been reset for Monday, April 9th at 6 P.M., right here in the community center. And I was just over at the Northwoods Credit Union. They have a soft opening yet the rest of the week, so you're welcome to stop in there and check it out. It's a beautiful building, very spacious, and lots of offices to grow into. They open up full-time next Monday, and expect a large crowd. And they'll be having an open house and ribbon cutting in the spring. They haven't set a date yet. And then Thrifty White is going to be opening April 9th, so I talked to the manager, and there won't be a soft opening for that. That's just going to be the date that they open up, so. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to four F, liquor committee report?
No, just moved to six G and six H.
We added it to F. Oh, we're not going to do that.
We adding.
The F, I thought F was under committee, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted, if Mark wanted to talk about that. We had a really good meeting, or you want me to? Okay. Well, on March 1st, we had our liquor committee meeting with the manager, Mark Skelton, at the liquor store. I thought it was a very productive and informative meeting, and Mark had a lot of information for us and, and got us up to speed of things that are coming in the future. The things that we talked about were bills versus revenue report on, on how to track things, so there's a better handle on, on things, and Mark came up with some ideas on how to do that, as, as well as Tim. We wanted to be able to track transfers for, for the record of on and off sales, so we did discuss those things, so we could figure out a better way to do profit margins. So it's, it's an easier report for all of us, and Mark can track those things a lot easier. We did talk about the inventory needs and making sure that we have the right people doing inventory on a, on a consistent basis. There was discussion about the cameras needed for the liquor store. I believe we're talking about seven cameras were in the discussion. Talking about replay, fixing the letter Q, I believe, on the liquor store is, is still off, and we need to have that taken care of. There was some issues or concerns with a bingo and meat raffle from the Hockey Association not having a backup, and, and we felt that there's a need to have a backup for those things. Mark had brought up that there's been 35 Sundays of off sale so far since off sale has been in the liquor store. That's brought in roughly $56,000, which is pretty amazing. We also talked about signage needed for advertising that there is Sunday off sale right now, and we think that it might be a, a good idea for people that are coming through to say, "Whoa, they're actually open? I'm going to stop in to Moose Lake and grab that before I go on." They had 10 off-site uses of the liquor store, which brought in $5,600 in sales. And then there's the St. Patrick's Day, 4th of July, 4th of July, and, and some weddings coming up, and meat raffle bingo, so. And then we'll go on with the other one that we have later on down the agenda. Is there anything that I missed, Mark?
You covered it well.
But thank you very much. That was very informative.
Good to meet you.
I had a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Mark. The cameras, those are just for in-house use, then? They're not connected to the police department at all?
Again, I just run your story. I understand that that's not a possibility, from talking to the minister of Houston.
Because that was a, that's always been kind of an issue, that people feel it's kind of an entrapment if you have cameras there, but it's, there is no, just to get it clarified, those cameras aren't...
I would, I would...
So they, they will be on our server. They can be in a different section than, than the police department can view, which I didn't know when I talked to you, but they can be. know when I talked to you, but they can be. On a side note, I would say that our police department probably has some better things to do than to watch TV and see people drinking. I think if they wanted to catch people drinking, they would probably just wait outside the liquor store, but we will set it up so that the police department, I guess, doesn't have access to it 24/7, if that is what you guys want.
I know at least once a year, somebody comes up to me and says, you know, they're sitting down there waiting for you to move your vehicle, and they're, you know, monitoring them, and I said, no, no, they're not. And I'd just like to crush those rumors if we could, because I know it's at least once a year, I have somebody from the campground or somebody from the area, and they're just sitting down the road waiting, you know? Well, no, that's not the case, so if we could, you know, reinforce that, I think that would be better for business.
Can I say something? I agree with that, but I think some camera, like in the back door, you know, as maybe the employees are leaving, sometimes that would be beneficial to have the police department being able to see that as they leave at, you know, the later hours, just for safety reasons.
Safety, security reasons, not the patrons?
Yeah, I'm talking like after-hours closing, so when you're locking up or everybody's gone, and there's just one or two people in there.
We presently just have the one exterior camera facing the west, and I understand there'd be one on the south facing the west as well, and then one in the back for not only the rear of the building, but our deliveries as well, so, yeah, I think that's a good thing. We don't have that now.
Yeah. My concern is the employees being there after-hours and, yeah.
Thank you.
People still comment about how nice the store is, so again, I thank you. I can't imagine where we'd be if we wouldn't rebuild, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Just good job, Mark, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, moving on, Tim, 6G?
Yeah, so while Mark's here, I thought we could go over 6P and 6H as well.
Okay, so jump ahead.
Yeah.
And we'll do that, we'll move ahead to 6G. That way, Mark, you have, you can depart when you please. G is general election ballot question, Sunday on sale.
This was one of the items that came up at our liquor committee meeting as well, was right now, we are not allowed to sell on sale in the bar on Sundays. If we wanted to change that, that would need to be a question on a, just a general election, which we have this year, so I am wondering if the council would like to add that question to the general election ballot? And if so, make a motion, and I can research how to word that question and get it added.
Yes.
I guess, speaking for myself, as far as what we're seeing for off-sale, I think, you know, put it out there to the public to see what they say.
Again, I was on record before not wanting the bar open on a Sunday when we weren't able to sell, because I understand how this operates, and now that we're able to sell, it only makes sense that if you like the full operation, I say that's a good thing.
Good. I would, I would like to see it on the general election ballot.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put the Sunday on sale on the general election ballot.
I'll second it.
Open for any other discussion, questions?
I would just say under discussion, I think we have, our liquor store manager that has 30-plus years of experience has looked at this and said, you know what, it works on, for off-sale, it makes sense for on-sale, so I would support that.
Bryce, do you have any input on this item?
Well, I, I said, the muni, we have very few calls there. They really do a big job of managing the patrons and establishments, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions by anyone? Call-in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? I am going to vote no for my own personal reasons. That's fine, motion carried. Moving on to 6H, and it has nothing to do with management, it's just, it's just my own personal self. Under 6H, general election ballot question, additional intoxicating liquor licenses on sale only.
So the number of on-sale intoxicating liquor license is set originally, just set by ordinance, and then any changes to it are required by, again, a question on a ballot. Currently, we have two intoxicating liquor license, on-sale-only liquor license available, not available. We have them for the city. One of them is currently available, and then one of them is used by the muni. This is not off-sale, so this does not allow anybody to sell, like the muni sells off-sale. This would only be for on-sale. Craig, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about kind of what your thoughts on it were, other than I will say that we do have one available right now.
I guess on my part would be that for, I think it would help as far as attracting one or two more businesses for eating establishments and stuff like that, because actually, I didn't know that we had actually one extra, but I forgot about that. But otherwise, I would think two would be nice to have for, if we can find somebody that's willing to come in and build something for, you know, I mean, we could use a couple nice places where you could go have a glass of wine, and I put Neil.
Excuse me.
Basically, there's one and that's a half, that's a mile down the road.
So if I can, if I can clarify one thing as to what this, what this actually means, this would only allow people to serve hard liquor. So if somebody wanted to sell strong beer right now, they are able to get a 3-2 beer license. They are also able to get a wine license. Neither one of those has any limits on the number that we give out. If you have both, you are allowed to sell strong beer or just normal beer and wine, but you are still not allowed to sell hard alcohol, so mixed drinks or shots or things like that. If, we have, we have one place in town right now, Porgary's, is allowed to sell wine and strong beer because they have both licenses combined. That, like I said, that enables them to sell regular, normal-strength beer. If we were to move forward with this, what would, what we would be talking about is the sale of just intoxicating liquor, which is your hard alcohol, your shots, your mixed drinks, things like that.
Does that have to be a general election ballot?
That is the only one that requires the public to be able to vote on it, is the sale of intoxicating liquor on sale. That number, we originally set at two. If we wanted to change it to three, it does need to be on a ballot.
May I ask a question? So how long have we had the two? I mean, it must be-
Forever.
Forever, so we've-
Moose.
Correct.
So they were the second ones? Okay, so since the Moose closed down, okay.
I thought the split liquor was just voted on in the last, say, 35 years or something, I believe.
The split liquor, where beer and intoxicating are separate?
Oh, we're there, we're going to allow two licenses. I think it was referred to as split liquor.
I don't, I guess, I wasn't around 35 years ago.
I was the manager, I believe, at the time, so perhaps in the 80s?
I'm not sure.
Okay, but I believe it came to a town vote, and that's-
Well, that was 35 years ago. Okay, so then 35 years ago, it came to, came to be. I'll take your word for it.
Well, don't quote me on the air.
But Bryce is right, there was the Hilltop, Sioux Hill then also, yeah, yeah.
Is this 3-2 setup, or it's just 3-2? The bowling alley never had strong beer.
Never did.
That was never strong beer either, I don't think.
The setup, I think just the Moose was the only one that could-
And you fell on beer that time.
Allow to, yeah.
So there are some weird things that allow people to sell strong beer, though, at the same time. So if you call it a club, technically, a club can sell strong beer, and they don't need the wine license, and they're allowed to do it. A hotel can have an intoxicating liquor license, and they do not fall under our limits for the number that we have available. So there's a bunch of weird regulations that go along with this, but think of it more in the terms of what Counselor Serval brought up, which is, and we kind of talked a little bit about this, and this does not mean that Olive Garden is coming here, but say a restaurant that's like, a restaurant like Olive Garden, okay? People generally don't go to sit at the bar at Olive Garden, but they, when they go there, they might want to have a drink. So it is an establishment that probably does not compete with our municipal liquor store, but it is an establishment where somebody might want a mixed drink and be able to have dinner with it. That would be why I would say why we would want to have an availability of liquor license. This is the same argument that the East End of Duluth has, is it was set up a long time ago that no intoxicating liquor license would be allowed in the East End of Duluth. The reason that it came to a vote is because if you drive to the East End of Duluth, you will notice that there are no restaurants, aside from Sammy's Pizza, there are no restaurants in the East End, and that's because nobody could serve alcohol. So the purpose for the vote, what was it, two years ago, was to allow intoxicating liquor license so that they could get a restaurant, not a bar, so that they could get a restaurant.
To me, we are limited right now with what we're doing. All votes for allowing another liquor license would have to come through here anyhow, and I think would not behoove us to cut our own throats and having people go against our own liquor store, but a restaurant perhaps would be a good idea. So now would be the time to do that, if we're thinking about doing that.
Would there be a business criteria as to what you would want in place for that license to be had, in like a hotel or like Applebee's perhaps, or like you said, Olive Garden, that type of?
I don't know how we, how that would look, Tim, and when you're talking about that.
I mean, I know the Minnesota Department of Health does stuff for, so I mentioned the 3-2 license with the wine license, okay? Well, the Minnesota Department of Health also says that you need to have a certain category of food license to be able to have the strong beer license through 3-2 and wine. So there's a certain qualification food-wise that allows you to fall into that category. What we could do is say that a certain percentage of your sales need to come from food. That would then meet kind of the qualification that we're talking about here. The flip side is, is that there is absolutely nothing that says that we need to give anybody a liquor license. You know, we could, we could set up a bunch of regulations, which we might want to do, but there's also nothing that says that we need to give it out. I guess one thing that I, one thing that I would say in looking at this is, do we want to have two questions on one ballot about liquor? Do we need another liquor license right now if we have one available? Is this something that we need to do now, or is it something that we could do possibly in the future?
Question, does it have to go on a general ballot, or can it be a special?
You know, I don't, I don't think that we would probably want to do it on a special ballot by itself, but there is a general election every two years. So even if we kicked the can down the road, we wouldn't kick it down the road four years, we would kick it down two years.
My thought is, I don't see something happening in two, you know, necessarily between now and two years.
I could see something happening between now and two years. I don't know that it would be two big-time restaurants. You know, I think we have one that's available right now. I think we would probably be okay for right now.
I guess my feeling is, is I'd like to wait then. As long as we have one available now, and there's a general election every two years, we could approach it in two years again, if that one is some-
I agree with you, Chris.
Restaurant that comes in and wants to-
I would, I would like to see the, and maybe during this two years, we could develop the protection of our own business, because I would like to see it, if it's, if we're going to open like that, I'd like to see it in a restaurant setting so that we're not in direct competition with our home business, and it would be smart business plan to do it that way. The one question, Sunday on sale, I think that's something that everybody's appropriate that's going ahead, and for two years and timeless to develop that. And we could look at what other communities have done to protect their businesses, to give us a little bit of time, and-
It's sort of like a two different concepts. If you're going to someplace to eat and stuff like that, or are you going to someplace to have a drink and visitate and stuff like that? And I've, because I've talked to people that use the liquor store and stuff, and I've asked them about that part, and they said, they don't go to the liquor store to eat, they go to the liquor store to associate with people and stuff like that. When they go out to eat, it's a whole different atmosphere.
Right, right. Do we have consensus then to wait on that second question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have consensus on it. Thank you. Thanks for your input, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Moving back to number five, previously discussed business, we have 5A, the sales tax update.
We are $4,191.14 away from paying off our setup fee, so we still didn't get paid, but it does show what we would have gotten paid, and if you average that over the course of 12 months, it would be a little bit over $200,000. So once we start getting paid again, I think things will be looking pretty good.
Well, so we get the initial payment?
We do get, yes, we do get the initial payment, but then we don't get the, there's like a cleanup second payment.
Okay.
We don't get that.
Is that every three months or once a year?
Once a month, well, twice a month. We get an initial payment on the 5th of the month, and then we get a cleanup payment, yeah.
And a cleanup, that's just covering pain off the initial?
Yeah, so like the Department of Revenue says, so on the 31st or a couple days after that, sales tax is due for March. So the state collects that, and they give us an initial payment a little bit sooner, and then once everybody has filed, they give us our cleanup payment, which is the remainder of what everybody paid in minus their fees.
Questions by the council? Thank you. Under 5B, selection of city engineer.
The committee met with six different engineering firms that submitted applications. I think we had a lot of qualified, very good interviews. The one that was selected by the committee was SEH, and that is the one that is, their proposal is in your packet, and then on page-
37?
37, well, I don't know.
Starts.
On page 57 is the agreement. So the committee is proposing SEH. We will also finish out any projects that we currently have started. We will finish those with Bolton and Mink, not finish those with SEH. I did talk to Bolton and Mink and SEH kind of about that, and both were agreeable to that and would rather that it does work that way, so, yeah.
All right, discussion, action by the council?
Motion to use SEH and enter into this agreement.
I'll second it.
Questions, discussion by anyone? Mr. Administrator, are you satisfied with the selection?
I am.
Yourself?
Yep.
Very good. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. When will this start?
Start date? This will start tomorrow.
Okay. Under five C, contract for building inspector.
This is a contract for the building official that I am proposing. This is also the building inspector that is taking over in Carlton and Renshall. We, Katie and I met with him, talked a little bit about how, how it would work administratively with him, as well as the fact that it'll be a little bit different. You know, one of the, one of the really, really nice things about Dwayne is that he's in town and inspections can happen, you know, on the weekend or at night or things like that. So there will be a, there will certainly be a difference if we move forward with, with this building inspector. They will have a dedicated day in Moose Lake, but then also be willing to look at using technology maybe a little bit more as a tool. So my recommendation is that, that we move forward with Township and Range LLC, and this would start April 1st.
Okay, and I see they are out of Duluth?
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we accept the contract for building official services for Township and Range LLC.
Right, I'll second that.
Do you have any questions, discussions?
Sure, I had one.
Yes.
So how are we paying them? Is it an hourly rate or it's by percentage of the job or?
It is by a couple different factors. Seventy-five percent of the building inspection, I'm sorry, seventy-five percent of the building permit fee goes to the building inspector. One hundred percent of the plan review fee, if there is one, goes to the building inspector, and then there is a monthly retainer that is for the day that, that is spent with us.
It's on page 67.
Yeah.
Number nine, 10.
So we're mainly paying them on a percentage of the job then instead of by hourly rate?
Correct.
That was an issue I had with, before, you know, because people can argue and say, well, the inspector will kick up the price of the job so they'd make more money and.
So there, there is, I guess, technically, an opportunity for something like that, for that argument to be made. However, our building permit fee is set by the city. As far as the plan review fee goes, generally, those are your larger jobs, a new home, a new commercial construction. You know, I, I can't promise you that we're not going to have those arguments. I can, I can just say that this, this is a, what, a 60-day notice agreement, and we will, we will certainly have some fine tuning to do with any change that we make, but, yeah.
We're aware of it.
And you said, what was the start date again?
April 1st. It's just the start of the second quarter.
All right. Any further questions, comments by the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under five D, Minnesota Municipal Clerks and Finance Officer Annual Conference.
I just wanted to remind everyone that I will be gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of next week, but I will have my cell phone and I will gladly probably answer it. Probably.
Very good. Thank you for the information. Moving on to number six, new business, six A, Mercy Hospital Annual Report, that starts on page 69.
Yeah, John Lund asked that I include this in here, and then he also asked to present. I'm not sure if he thought the meeting was at 6:30 or not, but the annual report's in here. Yeah? If you have any questions, I can, I can send them forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Pretty much general, very easy to go over. All right, thank you. Under new business, six B, LBAE, April 5th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m.
That would be the local board of appeals that currently there's one person certified in, just.
I did attempt to go on, but you cannot do it online anymore. The cutoff was back a little ways, so I attempted.
I wonder if my initial email said that.
I did attempt, it did, well, I attempted.
And it takes a while to.
So I'll re-attempt after.
Oh, I had all those.
So you, just to be clear, you cannot be gone that day. You, you have to be there, otherwise we cannot have that meeting.
What time does Mike have to be, 11:00 a.m. Bryce?
10:30, you need to be here.
Mike has to be here at 11:00 a.m. on April 5th?
Why don't you be here at 10:30?
Find me later on time, Bryce, you know.
I'll be up.
Thank you. Six E, ferroc acid, excuse me, chloride acid quote.
Yeah, ferric chloride acid is, is for the phosphorus removal at the wastewater site. I gotta be honest, I don't know what this is, so if you have any questions, Phil can answer those.
Do you need a?
That's what we treat our phosphors at ponds.
All right. Need a motion on this?
We do, yep.
What is the total cost of looking at?
This is.
Seventy-one.
Dollar fifteen per gallon.
It's a dollar fifteen per gallon. It's, it, it depends on how much we need to order, which we probably won't know until we start sampling and, until we're done. I will say that we, we do have a budget line item for chemicals at the ponds, so.
So we're just approving the dollar fifteen per gallon?
We are basically approving the chemical provider at this rate, which we only get chemicals from one place, so you're approving Hawkins at this rate.
I'll make that motion, we approve Hawkins for the, at that rate, for the ferric chlor-
Do I have a second? Yes. Just a question by me, wouldn't this just be a normal purchase, wouldn't need to come here?
No, because it's, it will end up, between the two, we will end up spending, I think we budgeted seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars for, for chemicals. I'm allowed to spend up to fifteen hundred dollars without coming here. So this will be over my threshold.
All right.
I asked him that, I did.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever done it in the past.
That's because we only started treating last year and we brought this here.
I thought his threshold was fifteen dollars. Give me a fifteen.
That'd be fine, too.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Six D, herbicide for ponds quote.
I'll just make that motion is obviously something we need to treat the ponds.
Second? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Try to go quickly.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And it is for forty gallons, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Six E, motor vehicle legislative update.
I wanted to include this, Karen from the DMV brought, brought this to me. This is from their lobbyist that works down there. I think it's a really good letter. One of the, one of the issues that we have is, is basically the percentage of what we bring in, what portion goes to the state and which portion do we get to keep. This letter talks a little bit about their request to change how that is allocated. One of the things that I found interesting in here was that they thought that the, about forty percent more work overall is now being handled by deputies, which if you look at our budget for the DMV, we do well over a million dollars in revenue in the DMV, and we, we don't even cover our costs and our costs are very, very, very minimal. If we even kept ten percent more of, of what we had coming through our office, we would make a ton of money. I mean, I, we don't even need to keep ten percent more. If we kept two percent more, we would be fine. And the state is unwilling to, to change the fees because they thought that it was unfair to have the citizens of Minnesota both pay for the new system and then pay for additional time for the deputies, which is insane. Hopefully, they will, they will allocate more of, more percentage to the deputies, but I don't really see that happening either, so.
So in essence, no change?
Just, I just heard today that the head of this department is.
Yep.
No longer with them.
Yep.
There's going to be some changes.
Yeah, they are, they're asking the legislature right now for $10 million, which is just a, a bridge to the total, which I think is $43 million that they're asking for. And if they don't get the $10 million by the end of March, all of their contractors, their contracts will be up and nobody will be working on fixing all the issues that are wrong with this. So it's good times in the DMV right now.
I have to make pencils, we'll be back to pencil and paper.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you very much. Six F, Katie Boone approval for DMV?
Yeah, she, do you know exactly what we're approving? She needs to get fingerprinted and background checked so that she can do licensed stuff.
Yeah, all I'm gonna be doing is dragging licenses, but now Karen and Tracy both just talked to me, or Tracy talked to me today about getting fingerprinted, which I didn't have time to do. I don't know what else I need to do.
So it'd be kind of like helping, like Jean did when they were overcrowded and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So would that be with the police department fingerprinted?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they were waiting for a piece of paper that I have to get my fingerprints on, but so I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, Miss Karen wasn't here today, so.
Bryce always offers to do mine for free. Just take a ride in the back of his squad truck.
Yeah, I think, I don't know. I know. I'm not going to.
And evidently, Tim here in favor of this, Katie's fine with it, and, okay. We need a motion from the council?
I'll so move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We've already done G and H, so we'll move on to six I, Fund 120 City Redevelopment Fund.
In the minutes of the Economic Development Authority meeting, you can read more about this, but Fund 120 is the city's redevelopment fund. It was created for a revolving loan fund and then supplemented when Pat had submitted the Small Cities Development Grants. That program is now done and we are collecting back on those loans. So Fund 120 is basically where this money is going, and outside of me, no group is really responsible for, for this money or, or doing something in the future with this money. What the Economic Development Authority is asking, and I am asking, is that we give oversight to the Economic Development Authority over these funds. They will still make recommendations to the council, but at least there will be a committee that provides oversight and guidance as to the use of these funds.
Okay, final decision comes back here and.
Yeah, yeah. So you can see just on this sheet of paper how much money we're talking about, you know, there's $20,000 in there right now, $45,000 is still owed on outstanding loans. We're not talking about a ton of money, but there is, there is money there.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Some moved. Do we have a second?
No second.
Questions, discussion?
So this is a joint powers agreement with the ability to have a treasurer or whatever to those funds or how you?
Well, the Economic Development Authority has a treasurer and you have a treasurer and they're the same treasurer, but more so what will end up happening and what we kind of talked about at today's meeting was, I'd like the Economic Development Authority to kind of come up with new ways to use this money, and at least there's a committee, not just me thinking of ways to, to use this money, and then they would make that recommendation of how to use this money. And then once, if the city council approved that, then they could just provide the oversight, the day-to-day oversight, and we wouldn't need to bring it to the council every time that we used those funds the way that the EDA and the council approved.
Yep, that's why I thought it was covered already in that joint powers agreement that we already.
Yep.
Okay, yep, okay.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. No further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
Under six J, polymet mine letter, and that is on page 77.
Yeah. Sheila had called me, requested that this be in the council packet, and it is.
It's about concern for environmental effects that the polymet copper nickel sulfur mine poses to our communities. So it's in there for the council's purview? Any questions or comments from anyone? If you don't, right here, you can call Tim. Or Lois. I shouldn't say that, though. Call Katie, is that what we say, Tim?
I absolutely.
Everything goes to Katie, yeah.
Tim just said you'll have a stuffle on him next week, so I'm telling them all those stuffles.
Boy, she's sharp.
Where she makes the big bucks.
All right. Moving on to six K, tax study, public hearing, April 11th, 2018, at six. This is a reminder on the study done on the township tax study.
Correct.
Any further comments, questions? If not, we'll move on to the addition, six L, which was old school.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm just, wanted to clarify this, so we bought the playground equipment at the school?
We did.
Did we ever get to see where, where the new lines of the property is or is it being?
I don't know if I brought that to the city council or not, but it, it borders, it borders the playground, as well as we purchased the garage that's there, and then we have an easement on the driveway that, that goes back through there. So I am not certain if I brought the map of it or not. I, I have a, a copy of the map if you'd like to see it.
And that easement, then that would cover the water line going to that hydrant back there too then?
I don't know if it covers the water line, but the easement that we have is more an access easement anyways, so the easement.
They couldn't build there anyhow then.
Right, right.
Good, so it makes it easier for them to build if they know where they can, and, because that, there's a two-inch water line that goes off that hydrant that goes to our bathrooms on there, so that's why I was, has some concerns. And then my other concern was that.
They were under easement, Mike. I remember that from years ago when we did that, that, definitely an easement there that's protected.
I don't know about the hydrant, but I know the water line, I think we had, but now we own that one.
Correct.
Well, my other question is for wellhead protection, you know, the standard is that you're supposed to own, you know, 50 feet around your wellhead. And before, I don't think it was an issue because it was all public property and we're working with them. Is that going to be something we need to look at?
Moving towards the school.
So no one can build anything within that.
Fifty feet of the lake?
Fifty feet around your wellhead.
So that'd be into the parking lot in that easement that you're talking about for access down into that, that area.
And it's just a rule that they have, so you, you don't get any type of contamination going into your. going into your wellhead, basically is what.
I would, I guess I would say that we would probably need to review any building permits that, that take place anywhere near that, yeah.
Over there. Then, then the, the rest, do we, you negotiate then for any other properties there? The red pines or the, the baseball field and stuff?
Well, according to the paper, I did not. But we, we talked about the baseball field. We talked about, I was approached by people from the Little League Association as well about wanting the, the upper baseball field. Actually, I would love if the city had the upper baseball field instead of the lower one. It would be quite costly to, to change that from, basically it has different dimensions for Little League than it does for high school. The pitching mound is in the wrong place, the, the bases are, there's the fences, all of that stuff. There's no parking lot that we, we have access to. There are a number of, of things that, that would make it costly for us to take ownership of that baseball field without Little League kicking in money and the school kicking in money to do it. So what Bob and I had talked about was, as they look at plans for building out the remainder of their athletic complex up there, the hope is, is that they use the funds from the, the purchase of the existing baseball field as well as the school, put some of that money towards the athletic complex, and build additional baseball fields up there. We thought it would be a better use of, of money and just land to have all of those athletic fields together, including baseball fields for Little League. I would love to take the Little League field out, that, the lower one, and have it as a part of another complex because we could expand our campground. That was kind of my initial thought for the upper baseball field as well, was to turn that into a Little League field, expand the campground. It didn't really, didn't really work for, for us to, to keep the upper baseball field. Did we, did we negotiate any other land? No.
You know, I was under the understanding you're negotiating for all, all that.
The whole school?
The properties back there. You were looking at it. Because we even talked about the, the tennis courts. You're looking at that, and you said right away, we can't afford it. And I guess my point is here, as administrator, you're supposed to negotiate, but we're supposed to be making those decisions.
I agree with you.
So that, that's all I wanted to say on that. So, thank you.
There's confusion on that tennis courts also. At one time, we thought we owned the, the tennis courts.
We did. Under, you know, the whole thing was under.
I know.
McKay's grant to the city. And then the city split that up, gave some to the school. So, and again, little by little, every time they added on, the city gave in and actually gave them properties there. You know, we didn't charge them for it. When I was on the park board, they, we gave them the property there. And I know some of the, and what I'm asking about the lines is, some of the camper sites are on school property back in the old, you know, with the old survey.
Not, not anymore.
That's why I wanted just to see that if I can, just to make sure we're, we're square. We don't lose any camping sites or.
Yep.
Did you want to bring up discussion on the tennis courts?
It's too late. It's already, you know, from my understanding, everything's all sold already.
No.
Are you talking to schools?
Tennis courts.
There's a purchase going on, discussion with it. I don't know where they're at right now, and that's, that's kind of in their ballpark.
Yeah, probably the paper, they moved to sell it to, trying to do the company now.
Phoenix Companies?
Yes.
So the, the purchase is, is said to go through this summer.
That's, that's all I had. It's just, you know, I'm pretty sure everything's water under the bridge, and I just want to make sure we have, if we're going to catch heck for something, it's our decision, is what I'm saying.
At one point, I was under the impression that from the, our wellhead through the tennis courts and all those pines was city property. But we let the school use the tennis courts.
And that's why I wanted to see the lines. I believe it goes right around the tennis courts. That's the way it was.
You're thinking that tennis courts were given to the school, because at one time, I was in the impression that line went, followed that, around the courts, and then the garage was on school property. But all those pines behind it was city. And that one portion where the playground is, was requested from the school to put a playground there and was transferred to them.
Yes.
So I, I.
When you were talking about pines, were you talking about those, or were you talking about the school forest?
The red, yeah, the school forest.
Okay.
That area, too.
And that is definitely owned by the school, that, all those trees.
Yeah, they, we, the old property line was about three foot off of the old football field, you know, by the Little League.
Yeah.
It was about three feet off of that fence line, and then straight through the pines there. That was the.
Yeah.
The lot line there. And that one, I don't think we should.
We have to look at all that, to see what is the.
We had to get, we had to get it surveyed for the J.C. Building.
That's something we can look at.
It was all surveyed for the sale of the playground and for the shed. So the maps show all of the.
Definitely showed the tennis courts in this school property.
Yes.
Had to be transferred at some point, then. Okay. Did you have anything else, Mike, you wanted to bring up? Anything from the council? No? Tim, anything you wanted to add to that?
Nope.
Thank you. Moving on to number seven, reports and correspondence. I don't have anything in it at this point. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, moving on to number eight, committee and board meeting minutes. Excuse me. Eight A, Moose Lake Water and Light Organizational Meeting Minutes, January 17th. Eight B, Moose Lake Water and Light Meeting Minutes, January 17th. Eight C, Moose Lake Water and Light Special Meeting Minutes, January 26th. Eight D, Moose Lake Park Board Meeting Minutes, February 5th. And eight E, Moose Lake Economic Development Authority Meeting Minutes, February 14th. Do I have any questions or discussion on any of the committee or board meeting minutes?
Oh, I did, I, in the park board. Aga Days, they're going to do that at the Riverside Arena? The Stampede or the, which part of it?
The.
Or the, just the.
Set up.
The gym show.
The gym show. Of course, the old school's not available, and they looked at the new school. They were going to move it, but then it was kind of being shifted to the garage up there.
Oh.
And then a suggestion was made about the arena, and they took a look at the green, the arena and were very happy with it. And it does move it closer to downtown that way where the people can go from the Stampede to the arena or back. Just made more sense. And we'll see how that works this year.
Yeah, nice space down there.
Yeah.
Should work out good.
Any other questions on the committee, board meeting minutes? We don't, don't have any motions, so we will move on, on those. Number nine, announcements. Regular Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, April 11th, at four P.M. right here. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, regular meeting Wednesday, March 20th, three P.M. in the Water and Light Office. See, your boardroom is set up now, again, evidently. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Moose Lake Housing Redevelopment Authority Board, April 9th, at eleven a.m. at the Hillside Manor Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District, this is Tuesday, April 11th. Is that correct, Lois? I thought there was a change.
Yeah, it's April 10th. Fire District, that's a 10th.
Okay.
Today, this week, it's changed because of the township meetings last night.
Right, okay. Tuesday, April 10th, Emergency Response Center. Moose Lake Park Board Meeting, Monday, April 2nd, excuse me, six-thirty P.M. right here. Library Board Meeting, April 9th, one forty-five P.M. City Conference Room. Moose Lake Technology Committee, Thursday, April 5th, nine a.m. in the conference room. Any other announcements? Good. With that, do I have a meeting to adjourn? I mean, a motion to adjourn, excuse me?
I moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Adjourned.
I'm all in there. Oh, jeez, I can't make it.
My thirty.
No, I'm just kidding.